Good evening. Can I do the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Lookie from Plymouth Church, please.
Father, we come humbly before you this evening. We raise tonight before you Mr. Seven, Mr. Doig, Mr. Snow and Eric. We also, Father, raise up to you Jody and Mayor Snow. We ask your blessing and favor upon each one of these as they conduct the business of this village. We pray, Father, for 2023. Father, we pray for discernment and understanding. We pray for wisdom. We pray that every decision made is for the good of all the people. So tonight, as we begin 2023, we just ask a special blessing upon this group as they lead this village. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. I feel like I shrunk.
You did.
My legs cut off, my leg. Good evening, everyone. Hope everybody had a great Christmas and a happy new year. First thing we've got to do, we have a public hearing for the Spectrum franchise. We need a motion to go into public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Carry. Take it away, Jody.
Hey.
Well, it's just, you know, I mean...
So is this public hearing number one?
This is public hearing number one.
Franchise agreement came. Merzick looked over it. He said it was standard. You guys had it all. Do you want any changes? Anything? If not...
It looked good to me when I read it. I got it right here.
I didn't see anything that we needed to think.
Yeah. A little small.
The rest of the stuff, they sent some what's available out here?
Yeah.
And there are like five different providers.
Yeah.
There's a fair amount of competition actually out there.
Yeah. So you have no... Everybody's okay with it?
Questions from the floor?
Any questions from the floor? Anybody? If not, make a motion to come out of executive session.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Public hearing, I mean, not executive, sorry. Public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we want to make a motion to accept the contract?
Make the motion to approve the contract.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Carry. Okay. Second thing is the public hearing for the senior partial exemption. You've all, Jody made up a copy to give everybody. I hope you all had a chance to take a look at it.
You need to do a motion to go into public hearing, please.
Okay, so now I motion that we go into public hearing number two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Carry. So everybody's had a chance to take a look at it.
Penny, I've given you guys a few different options. Is this what you wanted to go with?
Does this look good to you? Everybody?
It has the same scale.
That's what the town is doing.
The town is doing, the county is doing the same thing too. Anyone that's making over nineteen thousand six hundred won't get any exemptions. But it goes from income of twelve thousand to seven hundred or less, you get a fifty percent exemption. Then you go to thirteen nine, it goes to forty, it goes all the way down to twenty. The bigger one for us would be the twenty percent.
It's households for persons sixty-five and older. Married couples.
Yeah. Do you have any more?
No.
We went over...
In our village code, apparently there was an error. It implies that we were collecting a whole lot more than that, providing a lot more than that. We have to give that.
Yeah. It was something, maybe it was discussed at one time and never was implemented. So if there's no more discussion on this, I'll take a motion to go out as executive. I mean...
I motion.
Second? Love all. All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the tax exemption for persons over sixty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Carry. Aye for me too, as well. Okay. Those two are done. Okay.
You need to do Bill.
Well, just public hearing first.
He needs to leave.
Oh, you got it right. Okay, Bill, come first. Let him do public hearing. I didn't know if that...
Yep.
Yeah.
He's got a meeting to get to.
Meeting, meeting. I'm sorry.
Do have a couple of things to hit you guys up on. You may have seen a tour last month around the village doing the, working on the INI study. Air Health Construction was in town for a little over a week in between with the weather and the TV inspections and cleaning of a number of the sewer mains. Ended up concentrating on one of the trunk lines that goes across Delaware Street, across the green sprays, out towards the fairgrounds. Did find a lot of debris and what appeared to be a fair amount of INI in that section and some other spots throughout the village too. But that was a big line that's deep and below the water table. And it appeared that a lot of water was coming in. So that may be a good target for INI repairs with the reports that we'll get back from Air Health Construction. They actually have the videos from those inspections. So if anybody's interested in a week's worth of videos of sewer lines, more than welcome. But we'll compile those into a summary and some different options and get some cost estimates for repairs. There's some different options for repairing sewer lines that have leaking. You know, worst case, they can be replaced all in all. I don't think that'll be the case here. They can be lined or there's different methods of sealing, just the joints, you know, if those are your problem areas. So we'll get some estimates and put those together and then present that to the board to be a potential project to make some repairs.
I think this should be one of our top priorities. The INI has been very, been going on. We've done a lot of studies on it and it's been...
It's costly.
We know a lot of laterals are leaking as well. And you said now they can fix these laterals, so...
Yeah, there's technology in place to be able to line not only the sewer main, but the lateral going to the individual property without having to dig the street up. They can do that, you know, from manhole to manhole. So that's in the works. On the water project, we have plans drafted that are going to the Health Department to get, sign off from them to then go to bid for replacing the water lines and doing repairs at the tanks. The separate project is the Curry well. So we had put that back out to bid. We bid it once earlier last fall. We only received one bid. We bid it a second time and tried to cast a broader net. We did receive two bids this time. These came in Friday. The numbers do appear to be better this time. I think it may be helpful to, you know, set up a special meeting to review that with the village, you know, here in a week or two once we've kind of vetted those numbers a little more with Sterling Environmental. But they appear to be more in line with what we were hoping for, you know, in our initial budget with the rebid. The highway garage project, if anybody's been over there, the new garage is up, but was under contract to be built. That is up. There's some trim pieces still being installed. The roof, the change order work that was added to put the roof over the existing building, that's mostly done. There's some trim that has to be installed there. But the building is largely up and the village employees are working on the interior finishes, a lot of the insulation. The wiring is being installed for the new building. And I know DPW and boats had the heating system installed and some of the other parts and pieces to kind of finish that out. The first, so part of that project is paying, being paid for from a $200,000 grant from DASNY. The first draw was submitted to them and they're working on releasing those funds back to the village. We have received, we have paid the first invoice to the general contractor, Tweety Construction. And that's why your packet's so long tonight. The second, the second invoice came in and that's in the amount of $168,300 for pay request number two to Tweety Construction for the highway garage. There's approximately $30,029 and change remaining in the contract. That's our retainage largely to make sure we get the last of the punchless stuff, you know, completed with the contractor. So we would ask the board consider payment of that invoice.
The twenty-nine, seven-four-three?
I'll make a motion to pay the hundred-sixty-eight.
Hundred-sixty-eight, yeah.
Yep.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Carry.
That's all I had to ask. We can kind of get together, we're gonna have a week or two of DPW committee meeting. Talk about the water wells and the pricing and what we think we want to do for that.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Thank you. Continue meeting. Don't be late. Okay. Next thing we're gonna go and do is the public input. I think this would be a good time to try to stand up if you want.
I'm Gail Sheridan. I'm representing the Walton Theater Preservation Association. And basically what we're looking for is a motion to move forward to change some of the way we do the lighting at the theater. And what we have now are permanent spotlights that are in the ceiling on three pipes of the, in order to change the bulb or move the position of them, we have to get up on a twenty-foot step ladder. So what we're looking for is an, we're just, at this point, looking for your approval to move forward and hire an engineering group that would help us figure out what can be done to raise and lower those, those folds with the lights on, similar to what the balance is out front. You would be able to do it with ropes and maybe pulleys of some kind. At this point, all we're looking for, well, since you are the building owners, in order for us to get any grants or to pay anybody, we need to have an approval from the board to move forward with the study. And it's just a matter of hiring the engineers to study.
Now, you're gonna pay for the study?
Pardon? You guys are gonna pay for the...
We're gonna be paying for the study. There will be no cost to the village in the study or whatever we come up to do. We will be applying for grants. But in order to get those grants, we need your permission to do it, your building.
I would make the motion, we grant permission. Yeah, as it's stated here, we're working in coordination with the COG enforcement as well.
Yes.
So I make the motion to grant permission.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Carry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gail.
Okay, next thing is number four, the abstracts. I'm assuming everybody had a chance to take a look at them?
I did not, so I have to abstain.
Okay. So we did look at it.
They were fine. I'll make a motion, we approve the abstract.
Oh, thank you very much.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Shane?
Sean, you both wanna come up?
Everybody get my report?
Yep.
Yep, got it.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
We took a lot of roll aids.
Well, we had a turbidity violation for being over point five for the more than the minutes we were allowed. The clarifiers are periodically green and they're still currently green today.
That was from Mike House. And you gave them an email?
Yes.
Did they respond yet?
No, they didn't.
Okay.
They just had a report once bill last night.
Oh, they did?
Yes, they called last night at quarter after twelve. But they lost four thousand pounds of two percent dressing mix and I went in and heard it flow to the offline EQ thing.
That's just so you can see what...
Well, at least they, on these bills, they let us know.
Yes.
But they've had three other bills last month they didn't tell anybody about. Okay.
And we have two purchases that we'd like to make. It doesn't tax either.
I have...
What's the matter?
Shane only did half his job.
No, he didn't. There was two.
I got Manning. You didn't get this one?
I didn't get that.
There's Manning and then this one. You don't have them both? Eric, did you get them both?
The first is for sampler head, for composite sampler. And that is a hundred percent DEP cost and that would be purchased from Manning Environmental at a cost of $3,137.
The motion will be approved.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Carry.
And the second purchase is approval of the service contract for the air compressors and seat bud. This is a budgeted amount and that's also a hundred percent DEP cost. And it's there for $5,376.32.
We'll approve them all day. Second? All in favor?
Who did that now?
I did.
Dick made it. Eric, second?
It's free.
Free. It's for me. Give me three.
Free.
That dark, sorry.
Yeah.
They got tongue tied.
Free air with Spectrum, right?
Yeah.
Free. Second phone is free.
And we had a New York City DEP inspection on December seventh and they found everything satisfactory. But it was after that when the clarifiers turned green and we had turbidity violations.
Fuck yes.
Are they aware of the complications we're facing in those things now?
Yes, there's been several emails in the past and lately they haven't responded.
We give them emails every time there's something going on. The new, it seems like the new
Protocol?
Protocol is not responding to emails and not giving, letting you know what's going on. I'm surprised that we knew about this one spill because they had four other spills that we didn't know about. So, and it's really causing a lot of chaos down at the plant, right?
Yeah.
So last night's a step in the right direction.
Well, the step in the right direction would be to pay the bill that they owe us, the money they owe us. That would be the step in the right direction. They don't seem to want to do that. They want to pay us. Seems that they want to pay us, but they feel that they, they pay, they need to pay us, not what we tell them they have to pay us. I mean, I'd like to get down to their plant and tell them, you know what? Don't make that size a can. Make a smaller can, probably better. But we don't do that because it's not our business. But we've been doing this for craft for fifty years. We know how much flow that they have. We know how much business they do. They didn't come in and create the wheel again. They gave us the same thing that we've been doing for fifty years. They're doing the same cottage cheese. They're doing the same cream that they did before, so it shouldn't be a problem. We seem to know what we're doing. And we've said to them, we said to craft, we said to them, anything over fifty gallons should be reported to us. And any chemicals at all, chlorine or anything, should be told us. And any way, any site, any amount of way should be given correctly. Is that the way I understand it?
Yes, yep.
So, and, and the last thing, we asked them to, before we can go any further, pay the bill that you owe us. They gave us a check yesterday for sixty-some thousand.
That was for October's bill, which was initially, what was the bill?
Eighty thousand.
And they decided to cut and paste the bill and they paid how much?
Sixty-four, is that right? I think sixty-three, something like that.
So wouldn't all of our water sewer users want to be able to do the same thing?
Right. As of right now, with the bill that just went out, by the end of this month, they're gonna owe us ninety-eight thousand dollars. So I, we've already sent them a letter. You pay by the end of the month or else. It's as simple as that. We...
And the or else is?
Shut them down. With Claude.
And we're gonna plug the...
We're gonna plug this. As of the twenty-sixth of January is the ninety day. We gave them a, first of all, go back. Let's go back from day one. We've been negotiating with them for a year. We sat down with them three times before they hired, they got their new corporate lawyer involved and another guy. And we sat down once with him, it's four times. And every time we talked to them, we let them know we want to pay our money. Pay us what you owe us. If we have customers in the village that don't pay the water sewer bill, they get shut down for a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars. They owe us a hundred thousand dollars. And they seem to think that they can pay us what they want, but they can't. Because we're not making a profit and living off our profit. This is to pay our bills. And if, if they didn't pay, just to give you an idea, I was kind of calculating a little bit. If they didn't pay us and we said to the customers, we know you're gonna have to make, because Mike House didn't want to pay, it probably cost everybody about seventy-five to a hundred dollars extra because Mike House didn't want to pay. They're a multi-billion dollar corporation. You know, so I mean, we're a small, little village, so all we're asking is just pay what you owe us. That's all. We, you know... We're not new at this. You guys have been doing this for fifty years. We craft, so we know what we're talking about, so... Not to beat at that horse, but just so everybody's clear on what's going on. I think I made it pretty clear. I hope I did anyway.
I do have a question, actually.
Yeah, go ahead.
Have you, are these usage fees or are these fines and fees that they're being assessed?
Both.
Both. Well, I think they paid the fines already.
The past ones.
The past ones.
Each time if there's overages or additional charges.
Yeah, yeah. Each time they have overages, we give them fines or add it onto their bill. They're, they're, they seem to, they seem to think that their flow and their bills are different than what we know. I don't know where they're getting this from, but I tried to explain to them, the guys have been doing this in the plant for fifty years. We know what the plant sends down. You know, you didn't come in with some extra products that you're making. You're making the same line of stuff that you made for fifty years. Your flow may be off a, some gallons here and there once in a while, but not continuously. So I hope that answers your...
Well, do they have a contract with the village?
No. That's why we've been sitting down with them to get a contract. Regardless if we had a contract or not with craft before, when a new company comes in, there's always a new contract that has to be worked out. So we sat with them, down with them last December was the first time we sat down with them. We said, well, you're new. We'd like to get a contract. And we sat down with them. And each time we sat down, we, we told them, our rates have been very fair. The only thing that we raised is because our chemicals have gone, because of COVID and everything, our chemicals have about doubled, right, John?
Oh, yeah, at least.
At least doubled and...
Trucking fees.
Trucking fees, everything has gone through the roof. So we've only charged them what it costs us so that we can just pay our bills. We're not making a profit on this. This is just to pay our bills and maintain.
I do have one last question.
Yes.
When you're referring to your spills and the notifications that you're getting about turbidity, how do you know that it's craft and not one of your other manufacturing facilities, like the school or the...
There is no other manufacturer.
There is no other manufacturer that could give us anything, that could do anything like what they did down there.
For instance, the hospital, the school?
No, they don't, they... No, they don't have anything that comes in that could do anything like that to our plant. They're the only one.
We know it's a milk product. It's not...
You can tell it's a dairy product, yeah.
It is a dairy product. It's been identified.
We, we had an issue one time with craft. If you remember, I think a couple of years that we had that smaller cheese place up by the lumberyard. And when they had issues, they were saying, no, it's a cheese place. And the guy was like individually, a little small, right? It couldn't affect it at all. To give you an example, the chlorine that we, they had this big chlorine spill a couple of weeks ago. In order for anyone to do that, everybody in the village would have to get together with a gallon of chlorine. If they all together, that was poured down the drain. And that's the kind of result that we have at the plant.
So it wouldn't come from the hospital?
No, it wouldn't, couldn't come from the hospital. It couldn't come from anybody in the village at all.
Even, even the pool doesn't store enough chlorine to affect the influence to the plant.
It's a massive amount of spill.
And when craft or Lattalus has shut down, the wastewater plant clears out and we can reduce chemicals?
Yeah. Once they're offline, we're, we're good. We're, we're clear.
And our sludge reduction is, is unbelievably different. We typically run with them on anywhere from eighty to a hundred and twenty thousand gallons of wasting a day, correct?
Sludge?
Sludge that we waste a day. And when they're off, we can be, well, over the weekend when they were shut off during the holidays, we did three thousand one day, seven thousand the next, to ten thousand. So the sludge production alone when they're online proves that they're fifty to eighty percent of the loading that's coming into the plant. I mean, that's unfortunate, the correlation to, an easy correlation, I should say.
And again, I want to clarify, wouldn't, none of us like to do this. This is the last thing we wanted to do. Just like we don't like to shut off a customer that doesn't pay a bill. But this is a lot of money. We have no choice. I'm not happy about doing it. I wish, I just say, just pay your bill. And we want to work out things later on. We can work out things. But here's what you use and you gotta pay what you use for.
Well, if they don't pay their bill and you do shut them off, what happens to the rest of the rate users here in the village?
Meaning what, as far as paying, huh?
Well, doesn't the, doesn't the plant account for sixty percent of the operating expenses for the wastewater treatment?
You can explain that. I, but if they, if they, my layman's terms are, if, if they're shut down, then a good portion of the plant will have to, don't have to, we can shut down motors, we can shut down electricity, we can shut down. We're gonna use one-third as many...
Well, your, your chemical usage and the electric usage, everything will drop considerably. So the cost of operating the plant drops dramatically.
Yeah.
I mean, chemical usage alone, you're using...
Last month was thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand dollars in chemical use.
That's double what it would normally be.
At least double where we'd be at, so...
I think the other thing, people, it's not the personnel that we use down there. It's not the big cost. The cost is electricity, chemicals, and the process of the using. And the more you have to replace on this equipment, it does wear it out and it's very expensive. I think we went to, what was it? A ten million dollar program to try to replace some of this stuff. It would receive less warranty, so yes, the cost would down. The other thing you have to remember, when it's a hundred thousand, we only have like twelve hundred accounts. So if they stiff us for a hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of money per customer that's left open that we would have to pay. And unfortunately, by the time it gets to this point, we already got the bill. And we will have to pay that bill whether they, whether they pay us or not. The hundred thousand dollars is gonna be paid.
So when you say we, do you really mean the sewer users? What's gonna happen to the...
Sewer users, yeah.
It's just the sewer users. It's not a tax bill.
Right. So that will, their sewer rates or their...
If we don't recoup the money, that's the only way we can get it, right? Yeah.
Right now, it's not, but we're still paying.
I think it was said at one point, the village can't afford to carry on this indebtedness. And then it's literally for the village and it's for the sewer users.
Right.
What this is about is responsibility of Oka Industries to pay for their usage and square up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Anything, I'm sorry.
Nope, nope, you're fine. Speaking of equipment, I know when, and you said your ten million dollar... Pass these down to them. One for you, you and Ash, it was nice enough to bring one for you. We, remember when we talked about the thickners and the drive units and all that? And that was one of the driving parts of that ten million dollar that we, we all know we couldn't afford.
Right.
I contacted this company called Rebuildit. So they, they work on clarifier drives, they work on thickener drives. So essentially, we can purchase, and again, this is just for budgetary reasons. We haven't even gone any further than discussions with them. But if we were to buy rebuilt units from them, the cost for the clarifiers, sorry, I wrote it over here, sorry. Cost for the clarifier, or for the thickners, if we had to replace both of those with rebuilt units, was roughly a hundred and eighty thousand. And that's installed, that's them coming out here, taking the old ones off, putting in the two rebuilt. And it was another hundred, I think a hundred thousand for the other one. So roughly three hundred and sixty thousand to do, to do those. And that's, that's pulling the old units out, putting the new units in, new drives, their new motors, the whole nine yards. And again, this is just for informational purposes. We're not asking for anything on this.
They included the labor too.
Yeah, everything. If you, yeah, when you go through the whole, the whole thing, it's actually pretty impressive. Considering you were looking at a price
Of new?
Of new, to revamp the whole things, I believe, of four or four to five million dollars.
Four, yeah, four million dollars.
So we went from four million dollars for a new one down to...
Well, these are, yeah, these are refurbished units. And again, keep in mind, ours are thirty years old, but still at this, for that cost...
But these units last a while.
Right. They're still warranted. And what they will do is take ours in and give you kind of a, if you will, a core price for them. So basically, instead of scrapping the metal and getting what you'll get for scrap, they'll take them back and rebuild them, but they'll give you work.
Oh.
They'll give you some money. We'll get money, like a resale away or something like that.
What else do they make?
So I actually also included there, if you take a look at their pamphlet, it tells you everything that they, how they rebuild them and what have you, just say some pictures.
Let me ask you something, John. On this stuff here, is, is this anything that... Let me ask you something, John. On this stuff here, is, is this anything that the DEP would get involved with it, or is this something that would be all the village?
This is, uh, well, the thickners would be twenty percent city.
Okay. So something at least, okay.
The clarifiers, we would have to discuss. And again, if you wanna look at, you know, Brian will talk with you about some grants and what have you, if you wanna look at what you wanna do. Because there's other things that, that we all know that we need down at the plant. So, but I just wanted to show you that, I, I thought this was great.
Yeah, it is. It's great.
Considering what the cost of a new, new units are.
Four million to three hundred and sixty thousand, that's pretty good.
I actually gave you the one with my, give me that. What are you doing? Taking my notes?
We gotta put them online, don't worry.
I started screwing one on it already.
Oh, that's one of yours, not even, I'm kidding you. Um, so, but if we can get them refurbished-
Yeah.
And they're the same ones, then I think we're further ahead.
And they'll last for a long time too.
Yeah, if they last the same route, thirty years, thirty years out of the same piece of equipment, which is unheard of.
I will be dead by then. That's pretty good.
I, I will be as well.
Well, we save, save three million dollars, I, I think that's damn good.
And this one here, I believe, is what Brian asked me to pass on to you guys. I don't know if there's any, maybe you would ask for him to-
Yeah, something.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yes.
And then back with the other equipment too, we're looking at, cause the RAS pump, Shane had A-Team come in. And they looked at the RAS pumps, which you can no longer get. So they're gonna look at if they have a company out there that can rebuild them, cause right now to rebuild them are ten thousand a piece, Shane, correct? Um, and they unfortunately get rebuilt.
We've been doing one, one pump a year.
Yeah.
Because of the regs.
So if, if we can find a, a little bit more, um, cost-wise, a company that's able to do them a little bit cheaper. As long as we know that they'll hold up, we'll watch for that as well. But, and then they looked at your inflow pumps, they're gonna look at giving you a price.
On rebuilding that.
On rebuilding those too, cause they're also, how much are they again?
I think they're thirty-five thousand new.
So, if we can get them rebuilt, then again, add a more reasonable price for what we've been spending.
Somebody gonna make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign this contract?
Yeah, he was gonna make it at a meeting tonight, but he ended up at a meet, another meeting, so he wasn't able to come down.
I was gonna real, good, sorry to me.
Did you read it for you before the meeting?
No, actually, I just got it before the meeting and unfortunately.
This is, the, the back page is just to schedule how much it costs when they use the things, yeah. But his, his-
Right now, they're not asking pretty many of it.
No.
No, I just asked them for budgetary numbers.
But he, he was asking, Johnny was asking about this, the contract with Cedarwood, to have them do the, the plan.
Oh, that we looked at before, yeah.
Yep.
So we need a motion to, so I can sign it with them.
I'll make a motion to re-sign the contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay. All right. I'll say.
But yeah, that's just for budgetary reasons. We were looking at, again, I just wanted to make sure there was companies out there that could do this service, cause otherwise we're buying brand new, right? You know, it's considerable.
It's like three million dollars less, I, I would say, yeah, I would take that.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll move ahead with that. And Brian also wanted to know how many engineering planning grants you guys have applied for recently? Do you know? No idea. Okay.
None that I know.
We just, we just let the Cedar Committee-
That's the only, yeah, the engineering, no, we haven't had any lately. No, there's no grants.
Cause he said that might be an avenue to, to look at, because then to include all this, once, he said then it gets reviewed by the DEC, EFC, and then they would-
Did you sign it?
Yeah, I signed it, yeah. He said, once that's, that's done, then they would review it. And if they let you know which funding avenues to take.
Yeah, I, I was-
But he said that would be something he'll discuss with you on a later date.
I was really, oh, I was really pretty good thinking, if we can get that screen, that screen is the, the one thing I really wanna get.
Yeah.
I'm sure that's gone up quite a lot since we looked at it.
Unfortunately, daily prices are changing on all this equipment.
I know. I went to the store today. I don't, I couldn't believe the prices, how much they're, and now here, now that the gas and electric is gonna double, if not triple, it's unbelievable.
Are we still looking at this rake?
Yeah.
Yeah?
It's gotta go.
Yeah.
That's, um-
Yeah. I hope they won't.
I don't know if I have the latest pricing yet. I might have it in my-
No, no, it's, I just-
I can get it today. Yep.
I remember I just bought yogurt for my wife away from-
Yes, now-
Orals and chains, it's seven, almost eight dollars.
Looking at it now, again, it'll be a matter of trying to get grant for, cause what was it, two, eight hundred thousand? I believe.
Yeah. They said a million dollars at first.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, anyway, that's all. I'm sorry.
Good.
Having a hand pick.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Well, yeah, these guys, I stand up and look down and the whole like, you know what he does.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last but surely not least.
Did you guys, can you guys be able to open that email?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So for most of December, when I was able to see it, it looked like it was a pretty-
Is she getting it down pat pretty good now?
Yeah, no, she's working out really good.
Looks good.
Yeah, she's really picking things up quite quickly, actually. So we completed the Mousony internship, and it worked out really well. Had a lot of positive feedback. Um, actually, I had him, I assigned him to write a, like a final evaluation for us. So we could pick up what we can improve on and where our positive strengths were and stuff like that. And he, I'll read that to you guys later on. It's quite lengthy, but I wanna let you guys see that. I told him it was gonna be, you know, strictly between him and I. And, um, once I read it, I wanted to be able to share it with you guys, and I said it was okay to do that, so that's what I'm gonna do. Um, I was also reached out by the, the high school, would like to get a couple other criminal justice majors possibly to shadow one of our officers. Um, they're trying to shoot for Groundhog's Day on February second. I guess the whole shadowing thing, kind of, so, um-
Are they covered the insurance policy?
They would have to sign waivers and parents' permission and all of that stuff.
Right. So I, and that, what, what age is that, Johnny? Is that eighteen for parents' permission?
It's like a field trip.
Yeah, it's, is it, if they're eighteen?
Under eighteen.
Under, under eighteen.
Okay. So with, with that, with all the proper paperwork, obviously, that would be before our next board meeting, so I would be looking for permission to go forward with that. Put them in a car for a day.
I know policies doesn't know the programs.
Yeah. Need a motion?
Make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay.
I'll make sure all the paperwork is completed for that.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, I think that's really all I got for this month. Um, there's a couple of things I need to talk to you about, the contract and executive, but, um, if that's all right.
Yeah, we're gonna talk to you anyway. I'm gonna ask you to stay anyway.
Yeah, okay. Other than that, I don't have-
Okay.
Anything else that you guys have any questions about?
All right, thank you.
All right.
Trustee reports. Eric will start with you.
Okay. Reporting for Parks Theater. So Mr. Sheridan mentioned, they're starting a new study to improve some interior equipment inside the theater. We approved that-
That thing's all in there.
That study. People are anxious about the ice rink. You know, we're waiting for cold weather to be able to freeze over there, so, so hopefully, hopefully soon. There's several movies being shown through January eleventh. And this month, Music on the Delaware is starting the Coffee House series. So, go to the website to find the dates there. And that's all that I have for trustee Jameson's report. I don't have anything additional to report on my-
Okay. Dick, have anything?
I don't have anything to add, Brian.
Steven, you got anything?
Well, the only point I wanted to make was that the cost of the chemical bill for the wastewater treatment plant last month doubled. It was thirty-six thousand dollars. We cannot go on like that.
No. A lot of money.
I mean, everyone in the village might as well just throw up white sheets, flags, surrender.
Yeah.
Cause, you know, when is the city gonna say, you know what, we're not paying for Walton's sewer anymore? Then what do we do?
Yeah. We're, as a saying, we're up the creek without a paddle, that's for sure.
Well, it's a dire straits situation.
Yeah, it is.
You know, and if, if, just an ounce of cooperation would have made the difference.
You're right. I agree with you. Is it?
That's all.
Thank you. Uh, man, if you put, I, just a couple of things really. I mean, the Bowlin Alley is moving along very well. They said they're, they're hoping by February to open up. All the nicer stuff has been done. The, the new lines are being put in. So that would be good if they can open by then, so hopefully. Joe and Benny's Pizzeria is working there. There's, all the stores will be full when they're done, so it's going good. I happened to bumped into the people that bought Papa's Diner, that's gonna be now by Gabby Ray's, I think. And they said they had some issues that they're looking to open up in February, so that's good. A lot of people asking me about Dunkin' Donuts. They finally contacted the village. They're gonna start the process to go through the planning and ZBA and all that kinda stuff, so that's a good sign. So other than that, I think overall, considering what's going on in the economy, I think we're doing pretty good for a small village here. We're, we're doing very well. Number, number eight, the twenty-two, twenty-one, the twenty-twenty-two completed audit.
Before, did you guys all a copy of the draft audit? Any comments, questions? If not, we need a motion for the mayor to sign.
I bet it looked good to me. It's been, we've really had a perfect audit for a long time, so Johnny, Johnny's doing a good job. Thank you.
They didn't find any faults other than they don't like the way we're doing it. It's a perfectly acceptable way to do it, but that isn't the one they agree with.
Yeah.
But yeah, no, everything came through with no faults.
Yeah.
I'm with you exactly.
So you make the, you gonna make the motion?
I did.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, thank you.
No one's listening to me.
I'm sorry. I listen.
I motioned five minutes ago, everybody just-
Okay, all right. I'll pay that. All right. The, uh, number nine, the twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three budget modifications.
We just not allowed, not there.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? If not, we just need a motion for, to amend the budget.
We're waiting.
I make a motion to-
Oh, we heard that.
Of the Village of, January third, twenty-twenty-three.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded it? You did?
I did.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Number ten, the twenty-twenty-three election polling place and hours.
Is that time of year to set the polling place for the election? Um, so that's March twenty-first. I suggest we have it here like we have been, from noon until nine. So if that's okay with everybody, need a motion.
I make the motion. Set the date and the time outlined, noon to nine.
March twenty-first.
Second.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry. And number eleven, New York State OTDA policy. Do you know what that is? That's the thing about the heating, the, the utility bills that they had, can't afford it to certain people at a certain level, can call up and get the okay, the bill, bills, the bill. But you wanna go further on? We, we, we just wanna make sure that if we're gonna do it-
We just need direction in the office to know what the board wants us to do. Do we wait until we actually receive the funding to turn them back on or not to turn them off? If we get written notification, we just need direction, what you guys want us to do.
Is everyone listening?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, the question ordinarily, if you're a normal customer, until we get the money, we don't turn the water back on.
Correct.
This is your question.
Right.
Are we gonna turn the water back on because the state says, we'll send you a check? Maybe they're like lactose.
Well, I think that if people are on public assistance with their water bill payments, maybe we should consider not shutting their bill off because we know we're getting that assistance from the state. But until we get direction from them, all we're gonna get is an account number-
Right.
Of a client, cause the assistance is anonymous and has to be protected. And, well, we're not, we're not allowed to say.
Yeah, and we don't have a problem in the office. We received one. We got a, um, an email. And within a week of that email, we did receive the funds, so.
I would think if we get, if we get an email from them saying they're gonna, I would say that would be enough that we could, we could-
And it wasn't from the customer, it was from the New York State.
So I would say, if we get an email for confirming they're gonna mail us a check, I would say that's okay.
To what?
To put them back on or not to shut them off, whatever. Yeah. So why do we hear something from the state that they're gonna pay?
The system isn't that we're gonna shut them off. They're, we just send their bills and, and they send it to the state and the state says they'll pay them, correct?
It's up to them to forward their bill to the state. To our understanding, it has to be twenty days past due. So that would actually fall before we send the shut-off notice, so there should be plenty of time-
To let us know.
To not even get to that point if they're on top of it and they send their bill in.
So I, I mean, if we treat them just like everybody else-
We shouldn't have a problem.
It's sufficient time for us to be notified that the, the bill's being paid.
Presuming that we get an email from the state saying, don't shut off Steven's water because they're gonna pay his bill.
As long as we get an email, I say, let it, we'll go. If not, we don't have anything, then they get treated like everybody else.
Cause it's not a percentage payment or partial payment, it's to bring that current.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. You got that? Need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
I make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry. That's it. As far as this, we just need to go in to make a motion to go in executive state, executive session to talk to the police.
I did have one-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Extra thing. No, we got something in the mail today from Delaware County. Um, it's the planning board contract that, it's an annual.
Yeah, yeah.
Thirty-five hundred dollars for them to help us. And, um, just need permission for you to sign.
Okay. We do this every year.
I motion for permission for the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, thank you. Now, we'll need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? All right. All right. Thank you, everyone.